And we will move on to the special committee of the whole meeting when the clerk gives us the sign, and it will be chaired by Chris Evans.
Okay, so I'd like to call to order.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the City of Urbana's Special Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, November 14th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of the minutes for October 17th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. Does anybody have any substantial changes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all against say nay. The ayes have it. Those minutes are approved. Any additions to the agenda, Mayor Marlin?
I actually have a clarification. I think some people are here tonight because they saw sewer intergovernmental agreement on the agenda. I want to make sure folks know this is not a discussion of the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issue. That's going to be at a later date. This is a completely different topic, just so you know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Quick question about the agenda. Presentations and public input, we've got an item in here for the presentation. Is the public input going to be prior or after that?
Well, I'll accept some advice. I mean, normally we would go to presentations first, but...
That's fine, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't noted on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and that does bring us to presentations and public input. I want to assure the public that you will have a chance to speak tonight. We'll just ask for a little bit of patience while we do have a presentation about the background information for sewer intergovernmental agreement. And Carol Mitten, I'm told you are leading the charge.
So, we wanted to give some background this evening on an agreement that you'll be seeing next week, which are amendments, a series of amendments to an agreement between the City of Urbana and Champaign and the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District. And so, I thought we would take this opportunity to give you some background on that before you see the agreement, and that's why Brad Bennett is here, visiting us again. And so, I'm going to give a sort of a much broader picture because I think that the background is useful. It's been useful to me over time. And I want to give a shout out to Jack Waller, who took the time in 2009 to write a memo explaining all of this and more, and putting a whole bunch of background documents together. And this is just a sort of Cliff Notes version of that. And so, what I want to talk about are three, what I think are interrelated agreements. And the first is a jurisdictional boundary line agreement from 1962. And then, there are agreements that are called the Boundary Development Area Agreements. There's a couple of, it was amended once. That's also called the Metro Zone Agreement. And then, we have agreements concerning the sanitary sewers in the Boneyard Creek from 1992, which is what Brad will do a deeper dive into that. So...
Could we just point of order, be sure that the mic's on and close? I don't hear you as well through the mic.
Okay, I'll do even better. So, the first is this jurisdictional boundary line agreement. So, this one was approved in 1962, and I don't really know what was happening before that. But, the idea was, the cities existed, but then, as each was going to grow, it was like, given that there's a boundary, like, who's going to get the next piece? Because there were opportunities, as the cities were so close, that one city could claim a piece of land that was going to be developed, or another city could claim it. So, this really established which areas would be annexed into which city. So, it established which cities would claim the extraterritorial jurisdiction and where the boundary lines would be. So, the cities exist, and I have a map at the end that shows all of this, but it extended the boundary line south of the cities along, what's it, Wright Street Extended, for a mile and a half south of the city boundaries. And then, going north, it was also Wright Street Extended until it hit Bradley Avenue, and then, there's a little squiggle there, and then, it goes up along the railroad tracks. So, that's the first thing. And then, everything else is built off of this boundary line agreement because things then flowed from it. So, what happened until 1973 was, there wasn't even any zoning in the county, so the zoning of whatever jurisdiction was claiming that side of Wright Street or whatever, that would govern development that happened, and then, the county developed zoning in 1973, and that took over. But, we still have, we still get to decide as things happen in the county, which city is going to claim that as part of their extraterritorial jurisdiction. So, then, the next thing is the Boundary Development Area Agreement. And this was approved first in Urbana in 1990, and then, a companion agreement was approved in 1991 in Champaign, and then, it was amended in 2001. And so, this was intended to address what was happening with the jurisdictions in areas that became desirable, but the jurisdictions were competing with each other. So, they were trying to get, say, a new manufacturing facility or something, and so, they were actually bidding against each other with incentives and so forth to try to get new development in either Urbana or Champaign. And so, this Boundary Development Area Agreement created metro zone areas, that was the name that was determined. It was fashioned after an agreement between Bloomington and Normal. And, so, to the south, the area of the metro zone is defined as St. Mary's Road to Curtis Road, Ray Street to Neal Street. And again, I have a map at the end, you don't have to remember any of this, this is just general background. And in Urbana, for instance, we have Orchard Downs in the metro zone on the south part, and the Champaign has the Research Park, just to give you a sense of balance there. It's a little different up north, I'll show you when you see the map. It's more industrial areas on both sides. But, the idea was, through this agreement, that as one jurisdiction or the other was trying to attract a new development, that the opportunity would be afforded to say, "We're going to offer incentives, and so, if you would like to join with us and offer incentives to this particular development, then you may share in the benefits of the taxes that flow from that development." So, the idea is to share in the burdens of the incentives and share in the benefits of the tax revenue. And again, this is all built off of the jurisdictional boundary lines because it respects that, but then also toggles back and forth in the area that has not yet been developed. And then, finally, we come to the agreements concerning sanitary sewers and Boneyard Creek. And as I said, Brad's going to do a much deeper dive into that, but I just want to give you, again, background about the importance of the jurisdictional boundaries. So, this was created because UCSD sort of got, I'll say, got stuck back in the 1920s with maintaining the Boneyard Creek. It was a dispute with the Saline Branch Drainage District. And then, UCSD was very interested in not having to continue to maintain the Boneyard Creek. So, the agreements that were created in 1992 said, okay, the UCSD says, "Okay, Urbana and Champaign, we'd really like you to take over the responsibilities for maintaining the Boneyard Creek in your jurisdictions, and in exchange for that, we'll offer you this agreement that says that if we connect someone new to the sewers, we'll give you the opportunity to annex those." That will require that they be annexed in. So, it's a lever to get annexation in these areas, the extraterritorial jurisdiction areas. And so, that was the sort of agreement. The cities would take over the Boneyard Creek maintenance, and in exchange, UCSD would require annexation when they made a new connection. So, now, here's the map, and I'll send this around, and we can get this posted also. But, you'll see that the line, the black dotted line, is the extended area that would be the boundary line once the cities are fully annexed. And then, the orangish areas are the metro zones, north and south, where this metro zone agreement would apply. And then, the sort of light purple bubble is the extraterritorial jurisdiction for Urbana. So, these things are all wedded together, and there's a number of other kind of court cases and related things, but this is kind of the three most important agreements that sort of derive from these, the boundary agreements between Urbana and Champaign. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brad, and he's going to take us in a deeper dive into the sewer agreements themselves.
Carol, can I just pause for a moment? Mary Alice has a few questions for you.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah, before you leave, if that's okay.
Okay.
So, if you could go back to the map for just a moment. So, these yellow areas are your, whoops, are your metro zone properties?
Yes.
Does that mean, because you described that there would be joint development and revenue sharing, so if any properties were in these metro zones, both Champaign and Urbana, regardless of where the boundary of Champaign-Urbana is? Could you just describe a little bit more about what that metro zone means?
Yes, so, I mean, ideally, if, the way that it's, I'm giving you just a thumbnail on how it's supposed to be administered, is, let's say that there was going to be development in Orchard Downs, and we wanted to provide incentives for that, then we're supposed to get in touch with Champaign and say, "We're offering, we're going to be offering an incentive." Maybe it's an investment in infrastructure, or maybe it's another kind of incentive, and we say, "We're giving you the opportunity to share in that. Would you like to go in on that with us?" And then, that will become a property that tax revenue will be shared. You share the incentive, and then, you share the benefit.
So, there's really two zones, one north, one south?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Brad, I think you have the floor now. Well, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And I just want to check on this. I assume that that didn't happen with the Research Park for some reason?
When you say that didn't happen, you mean that we didn't share?
Because I don't know that we share revenue with the Research Park, and I understood that the city tried to participate in that, but for some reason, it didn't work out. I think related to the Champaign School District not approving that. Is that, am I understanding, recalling that correctly?
I don't know the piece about, I don't know the piece about the Champaign School District. I will say that we have a disagreement, a longstanding disagreement with Champaign about the way the agreement has been administered, and so, there's never been any revenue sharing.
Okay, and then, my other question is, we also have Savoy. They're not a party to this, but they, I assume they fit into that corner of that orange section in the south.
So, this is the Cliff Notes version, and that is a level of detail. They are part of the metro zone agreements, but they're sort of a bit player, if you will. But, they got added in because they needed to be added in.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions at this moment? Okay, I think, Brad, you're good to go now.
I'm Brad Bennett, I'm Director of Engineering for the Urbana and Champaign Sanitary District. I appreciate your time this evening to talk to you about the, I'm sorry, to talk to you about the 2022 Sewer IGA that we're bringing for you to consider executing. I just want to start out with maybe just a little brief historical perspective to kind of set the background for the agreement. So, in 1894, Urbana actually constructed a septic tank that was kind of the first wastewater treatment in this area. It was followed three years later by Champaign constructing their own septic tank. Interestingly, both tanks were constructed at our northeast plant on University Avenue, where the site of our current treatment plant is. In 1921, the local voters voted to create a sanitary district to manage the interceptor sewer structure and, you know, create a treatment plant. It did take a while to raise the funds and to actually construct that treatment plant, so even though they were founded in 1921, it was really not until 1924 that the plant came online. We only had one treatment plant for a number of years. It did, you know, be able to collect and treat wastewater all the way to Mattis Avenue, where Craft is, but eventually, we hit the geographic limit of how far we could serve going west as Champaign continued to expand, and we had to add an additional plant, a second plant, kind of on the west side of Champaign, and we call that our southwest plant. So, we have two plants, a northeast and a southwest. The way that the infrastructure is kind of split up is, we, the sanitary district, owned the treatment plants. As part of the '92 agreement, we took over all the sanitary sewer pump stations and the force mains that go with those. We own all the interceptor sewers, which are the large diameter sewers that carry the wastewater to the treatment plants. And then, the municipalities, whether it's the City of Urbana, City of Champaign, Village of Savoy, Village of Bondville, they all own what they call collector sewers that pick up the wastewater from individual homes and carry them to our interceptor sewers. So, that's kind of the hierarchy. In the 1960s and 80s, those were kind of problematic decades for the sanitary sewer system, as well as the storm sewer system. A lot of you recall back from that era, there was a lot of flooding, particularly in the campus town area. We had sewer capacity issues. The sewers constructed during that time sometimes. There were material issues, there were construction issues, stuff necessarily wasn't always inspected and permitted in the way we would like to have seen. And there was actually some direct conflict between the sanitary district and the municipalities. The district was allowing developers to come in and get sanitary sewer service outside of city limits. This obviously created a hardship for the cities, you know, the municipalities, it blocked their future growth and expansion. It created some difficulties for the sanitary district as well. The cities weren't going to maintain the collector sewers in these unincorporated areas. I'm not sure why the district, you know, went down that road, but unfortunately, that situation was created back then, and it did create headaches, I think, for all parties involved. So, if you want to flip to the next one. So, because of those issues, back in the late 80s, IEPA kind of stepped in and saw that all the agencies were having difficulties and weren't really working cooperatively together, and actually threatened the community with what they call a sewer permit ban. Obviously, that has a real negative impact on a community, would, you know, basically eliminate growth. They're saying they wouldn't issue any sewer permits for new construction, you know, new developments, new apartment buildings, new commercial developments. So, the, you know, municipalities took that very seriously, as well as the sanitary district. And kind of out of that effort, in 1992, everybody decided to work together, and that led to the adoption of the 1992 Sewer IGA and the creation of what we call the Sanitary Sewer Technical Group. So, in '92, that group first started meeting. It consists of members from each agency, so there's representatives from the City of Urbana, City of Champaign, the sanitary district, Village of Savoy, even the U of I participates in it as well. In 1994, we created the first construction standards, so these are technical standards as far as, you know, what type of pipe to use, you know, how the manholes are built, gets into the real details of how the sewer construction occurs. This was really important because really, in order to get your sewer construction watertight and eliminate infiltration inflow in your system, the time to do it is at construction. You don't want to come back and do it later on as rehab and repair, you want to get it right when it's going in. So, that was a real significant step. In 2006, we transitioned from the paper sewer mapping to the more digital, the geographical information system. And then, where we are here tonight, you know, 30 years after the adoption of the initial 1992 Sewer IGA, is we're looking at adopting a new one, which is just kind of revised, updated version. The key principles from the previous agreement are still there. You want to flip it? So, when we talk about the problems back in the 60s and 80s, you know, this is what people think of as the flooding on Green Street. Obviously, that's not a sanitary sewer issue, that was a stormwater. But, remember, as Carol mentioned, the district owned the Boneyard Creek, you know, back then, so that was obviously related to the Boneyard Creek, if you want to go to the next one. So, I just wanted to go over a couple of the key provisions that were in that '92 Sewer IGA, and you'll see those are all preserved in the 2022 Sewer IGA. But, as Carol mentioned earlier, you know, the big one is, we will not allow sewer service without annexation, or if it's not, if a property isn't contiguous to city limits, we'll require a development or annexation agreement, so that once that property does become, you know, adjacent to it, it'll be annexed in. So, this was challenged all the way up to the Illinois Supreme Court here recently. There was a developer called Creighton that challenged that, and we were successful in our legal defense of that, and it stood all the way through the Illinois Supreme Court. So, that's, you know, probably the most important or key element. As mentioned earlier, too, UCSD took over ownership of all the sanitary sewer pump stations and force mains in exchange for the cities taking over the Boneyard Creek. You know, prior to that, the cities actually maintained some of the pump stations, which was problematic for the cities because that's really kind of out of their wheelhouse that they normally deal in. That's something that we, as a district, are able to do, you know, maybe a little bit more thorough job on the maintenance, because that's something that we specifically focus on with pumps. Obviously, we have a lot of pumps at our treatment facilities. And then, you know, the third key point was, there was some coordination on the permitting programs. You know, we coordinate to make sure that we're both approving developments and the sewer construction methods. The cities are kind of our eyes and ears out there, they're the ones that are building, and plumbing inspectors actually check the pipes as they're going in ground and make sure that they, you know, meet the current standards and are watertight to eliminate infiltration inflow for us. Do you want to flip it? And then, the final one I mentioned earlier was the creation of the Sanitary Sewer Technical Committee. And like I said, it's representatives from each agency. We spoke, focused specifically on the sanitary sewer system and, you know, coordinating efforts for each agency to improve their part of that. We meet quarterly, we develop and maintain those sewer construction standards, we try to update them every two years and make sure that all the local contractors are following those. We also maintain and create a comprehensive sanitary sewer map. Like I said, right now, that's, it's a geographical information system that's stored on the county's servers. And then, finally, we each prepare kind of an annual maintenance report that documents all the work that we put into maintaining the sewer systems, and we do share that with IEPA to show, you know, our continued commitment to keeping the sanitary sewer system in the best shape that we can. And that kind of concludes my part. I would like to say, kind of in closing, that this has been a great agreement for both the city and the sanitary district. I think both parties have benefited from it, that's why we're looking at revising and recommitting to it. I think it's served us both well. We don't want to own sewers that, you know, are outside city limits, that's not good for us, it's not good for the cities. So, I think it has created a lot of cooperation and coordination between all the agencies, so that's been a big benefit. And I just want to kind of personally thank Tim, too. We've been working on this agreements for about two years. We have a subcommittee in the Sanitary Sewer Technical Committee that's worked on it. Tim has been an integral part of that, and he's provided a lot of great input that's incorporated into the document that you see before you tonight. So, we've had a lot of attorneys and technical people working on this for two years, which is probably responsible for how long it is, but we do feel it's a really great agreement that benefits both the sanitary district and the municipalities. And we are happy that we were actually able to get the University of Illinois to be signatory to this new 2022. They were not party to the original agreement, but I think they've recognized over the last 30 years how beneficial it has been, and they now want to be part of it, which I see as a good sign. So, with that, I'll stop talking and turn it over to Tim.
Thanks, Brad. Yeah, don't let Brad sell himself short. He was part of that task committee, too, it's been working the last two years. He's been an integral part of this whole thing. I'm just going to touch a little bit on some of the summaries. You know, I think Brad had kind of hit on some of the real big key points, the, what I would say are kind of the anchors of the agreement are still in place. You know, this is just kind of re-upping all of our efforts to coordinate together to make the system as a whole better. The gravity sewer system has to work as one, so just because our ownership and operations disconnect when we connect to their things, we all need to be doing it the same way to a high level to ensure that all of the other components function well. So, I'll just hit on a few key points here, and then, what will come out in your packets next week will be a memo kind of going over this with actual copies of the agreements for you guys to review and a resolution for next week, but we wanted to kind of give you an overview of some of this ahead of that. So, the technical committee items, some of the revisions from that, we've just defined a little bit better the meeting hosting duties. It rotates between the entities that are part of this that will host those meetings and kind of aligns their responsibilities for hosting those meetings. The sanitary sewer construction technical standards just kind of re-ups the fact that we're going to continue to work on those and enhance those as we see fit through the Sewer Technical Committee. Representatives and updated contact info, we just kind of clarified in there that, you know, everybody's going to have to have at least one representative. I think the original agreement specified the exact of who was going to be that representative, and this is, you know, some of the updates is that, you know, it's these people or their designated representatives, at least one, and staying committed to updating that contact info that UCSD would then maintain. And then, we've just, the annual sewer maintenance reporting that Brad spoke about, we've just kind of defined some of the basic requirements that need to be involved in that thing. And I guess one thing I should hit on, because a lot of this, it's not going to seem like shocking changes for the most part, but what's happened is, through the last 30 years, we've evolved and we've done things differently, so now, we're just putting it on paper a little bit. So, some of these things are already occurring, we're just putting them in the agreement now. Some definitions, jurisdiction and maintenance items. We've redefined the definitions for the interceptor sewer, which are the big trunk lines that UCSD maintains, the collector sewers, which are generally what the city municipalities maintain, and then, what defines a sanitary sewer connection to those systems. We also define the sanitary sewer and technical committee sewer construction standards, just that they're going to be a construction standard that's going to be maintained by the technical committee and updated by them. And then, we, as Brad discussed, we've moved since the '92 agreement, I think in 2006, we moved to GIS. So, the authoritative sanitary sewer map now is maintained by the Champaign County GIS Consortium, and we also eliminated the requirement for paper maps. We just formalized that in this agreement. It's been going on for 16 years now, so. Connections and extension of the system, again, retain the core requirements for allowing connections and extensions. You know, either you need to be annexed into the city, or you need to have a development or annexation agreement that you will be annexed if and when you become contiguous. The cities and the villages are going to provide a list of exempt developments, typically developments that have occurred prior to the 1992 agreement that we don't have any formal annexation or annexation agreement with, and then, that would be up to us to maintain that the district would keep on file. Effective date, term and invalidity. 20-year term will, so this will carry us through 2042, with an automatic renewal for another 20 years, which is more in line with how a lot of these IGAs are structured now is for terms and renewals. You know, certainly, we'll be looking at these things, and if amendments are needed between now and then, the tech committee and the other representatives will get together and work on those. We eliminated special requirement that formally required the district board to terminate the agreement. That's not a formal requirement anymore. I think each individual, there are termination clauses in there for individuals, but it doesn't require the district board to terminate it. And then, we revised the invalidity to, the section to allow the remaining sections to stand in the event that one section may have been declared invalid, it would invalidate the entirety of the agreement. That was some legal stuff that happened with this. University of Illinois, this is kind of a big change, a big and a little change. They've been attending, they participate in the Sanitary Sewer Technical Committee, they more or less are, you know, adhering to all of the same things that we're all... more or less are, you know, adhering to all of the same things that we're all doing. This is formalizing that agreement a little bit with them. We, you know, it further clarified, you know, university's properties are not inherently exempt from annexation that we require of everybody else as well to get new connections. And then, like, the big one is UIUC is an official signatory to this IGA as well now, whereas in the past, they were, they were mentioned in the agreement, but they weren't really signatory to it. So good for all, again, that, you know, they own a lot of network, too, that the consistency and value of them being consistent with all of us is, you know, a shared value between all of us. And then this one, we put it in here, but the Village of Bondville, there was an amendment to the 1992 agreement in 2002 to allow service to Village of Bondville. So we just included a new section in this agreement to cover that amendment so that it wasn't lost when we transitioned to the 2022 agreement. And that is pretty much the whole deal. You know, like, as Brad said, we had a task group from all the entities working on this for the last couple of years. Both our engineering technical side and our legal reviewers have looked at this stuff, and we've all got to a point where we're all comfortable moving forward with this at this point. So we're bringing it before you. It'll come next week's committee, the whole. Again, all of the information, more detailed information will be in your packet this week for review, and then we can discuss more next week. Any questions?
Okay, so you are taking questions. Okay, anybody? Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
One thing, Tim.
Thanks, Brad.
Will we be able to get copies of this in our email?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll do.
That's what I would.
Okay. We will now go to public input. The microphone is at the front of the room there, standing microphone. Okay. Anybody else?
Hello. Hello. Hello, thank you. My name's Julie Watkins. I am an Urbana resident, and normally, I will listen to the council meetings on the live stream, but the agenda made it seem like maybe the Dr. Ellis would show up. And I, since I've been following that, I wanted to be here in person. This, the other presentation was also interesting, so I'm glad I came. It made more sense in person. But I guess the, it was rather unclear, it was a rather unclear state sentence, "Well, I better show up just in case." So I hope that there's something, when I looked through the packet that was online, I couldn't really tell what was going to be in. So I decided to show up. And you are making a point, I remember last week, about how much engagement and stuff that you want to get, public input, and if we know if the agenda is more clear, we'll know when or not we want to show up. And I am, and a lot of people are wanting to make sure that situation with Dr. Ellis does get addressed, so we show up. The other thing I wanted to mention was, last week there was, or recently, there was mention of the safety study or survey that's coming up, and because that's an issue for a lot of people, even more broadly. And from what I've read about situations is that it always is that the neighborhoods that are most safe have the most services, and that I hope that we're talking about safety, it isn't just police that. Sometimes a police solution isn't going to be helping in a situation that the underlying thing is economic. And so I'm saying that again, as I've said it before. And so I would just really thank you for taking this, these into account, and I'll keep listening to what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Noel, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and our city council persons. There was a referenda on the Urbana ballot which read, quote, "Shall Parkland Community College increase the enrollment for the support for workforce training program as well as increase the stipends of all those enrolled in that program through an intergovernmental agreement with local governments," unquote. Over 85% of Urbana voted yes. Please listen to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council?
Is this the only time to address the council on all nighters? Good evening. This is my first time doing this, so I might be a little nervous. My name is Paul Pritz. I've lived in Urbana for 23 years. I've worked here. I currently work at Carl Foundation Hospital as an anesthesia provider, and I'm here to speak in support of the incentive for retaining and recruiting the police officers. I think they're a vital part of our community, and it just makes economic sense for these incentives to be in place so that we don't lose these fine officers to the communities around us and from other states. I fear that if we don't have these incentives in place, then we're going to lose these people, and our turnover will be very high. This will be a stepping stone for those who want a job as an officer, and we won't have the community buy-in that these current officers have. I appreciate the diversity from other communities, but I just ask that we keep these officers as they have shown loyalty and have invested their time in these communities that we are currently living in. They have families, they have interests beyond their jobs. So this incentive will help keep these people in place, and the other incentives will maybe seem less lucrative to draw them away. So I ask that you support this incentive. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, that will conclude public input. Just as an aside, we do welcome members of law enforcement here tonight, so thank you for coming. And we'll go on to new business. First item is ordinance number 2022-11-045, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number four, omnibus. And it looks like our esteemed Finance Director, Elizabeth Hannon, will present.
Yes, and I'd also like to introduce Femi Fletcher, who is our interim HR manager. For any of you that have not had the pleasure of meeting her before, she'll be helping with part of this presentation. So this particular budget amendment really focuses on three items, the police recruitment and retention incentives, also some modifications to the criminal investigations work area, and then human resources staffing. So we're going to take those kind of one at a time, and Femi is going to start by talking a little bit about the recruitment and retention incentives for police.
Thank you for your patience. This is also my first time. So thank you for listening to what I have to say. I hope that it provides some good context and information for you all tonight. So this police recruitment and retention incentive package that we are proposing is kind of an imagination of what we thought would be the most competitive recruitment and retention package for the city of Urbana. Traditionally, we have not offered any kind of incentives for recruitment or retention in police officer positions, and unfortunately, that has meant that we've lagged behind some of our competitors when it comes to recruiting and retention. We pretty regularly get inquiries from other agencies looking to do backgrounds, check and see if we have officers who are willing to transfer and take advantage of some of the incentives that are offered by other local and regional agencies. So we've essentially put together a package that we think is going to be competitive and will do, we hope, wonders to help retain our police force and also to attract new officers to the Urbana Police Department. I don't know if, how much context all of you have, but police recruiting is very difficult right now in the climate that we are working, and all recruiting is difficult, but especially in our public safety positions. And the candidate pool for qualified officers is dwindling. We have done some work outside of this package to try and attract a wider and broader range of applicants, but we think this is going to be, to help us have an edge over some other agencies and help us stay competitive. So there's essentially three parts to this package. The first is a retention incentive. This would be for any current police officer on the Urbana Police Department, any current FOP member. This includes all police officers and sergeants. This would include a retention bonus of $20,000 in total, so $10,000 within 90 days of acceptance of the terms by the FOP, and then followed by a second bonus of $10,000 two years later, so at least a two-year retention package for current employees. Probationary officers would not receive the first allocation of this money until they had completed probation. Also, current officers who had previous law enforcement experience, at least two years of previous law enforcement experience, would be placed on the current FOP pay scale congruent with where an officer with that total number of years of experience would have been placed. So for example, if an officer, a five-year Urbana officer, had five years of experience at another law enforcement agency, he would be, he or she would be placed on the longevity and benefit accrual scale as a 10-year officer. This would not affect seniority for any purposes, including shift scheduling, leave sign up, or any other purpose. This would just solely be the components of that package. The second part of the package is the recruitment incentive, and so this kind of takes two lanes. First would be for lateral transfers. We call lateral transfers experienced police officers. These are officers who have at least two years of law enforcement experience in a patrol capacity, who have previously been certified as police officers, and who can, who have received the training to be a police officer. For those new hires, for experienced new police officer hires, those folks would also receive a $20,000 total package, $10,000 with their first paycheck, and another $10,000 when their probation has successfully been completed. Again, those officers would also be placed on the longevity and vacation and sick accrual scale congruent to where they would be with their total years of experience. So again, five years previous plus five years at Urbana equals 10 years total. For other new hires, that we call entry-level new hires, that's anyone with less than two years of law enforcement experience or with no years of experience, those folks would receive $5,000 at their first paycheck, and then another $5,000 when their probation has been successfully completed. This would also require an agreement between the employee and the city that that officer would stay with the city for a minimum of three years. The third part of this package is a referral package, and it includes $2,500 for any city of Urbana employee who referred an individual who began work as a police officer and who completes probation. There's one bonus payment would be available for each employee up to a maximum of $10,000 in bonuses.
All right, so. So as we discussed several weeks ago now, the total cost of these incentives is estimated to be about $1.34 million over four years. So some of them don't get paid till, you know, further on down the road. But for this year, we're planning to budget about $606,000. And again, the total cost of the program could vary depending on how much turnover we experience and so forth. So the second part of this budget amendment is related to modifications to the criminal investigations work area in the police department. So you probably recall that the FY '23 budget included two new civilian positions to increase investigative capacity in the police department. After further evaluation, staff determined that the criminal investigations division work area needed to be reconfigured to accommodate the additional staff. So the estimated cost of those modifications is $75,000. All of that is a one-time cost. $25,000 was identified from existing budgeted funds, and additional $50,000 is needed to complete that work. And then the third part here is related to human resources staffing, and I'm going to hand this over to Femi to do part of that in just a minute. But I do want to say that we realize that everything works better across the city when we have an HR department that can meet the needs of the organization. So I want to be clear that we don't currently have that, and that's where we're trying to go. We're kind of a support system for everything else that happens at the city, and what we really want to do is enable people to do their jobs to, you know, as best they can. So Femi's going to run through a few things related to human resources staffing, and then I'll wrap it up.
So as Elizabeth aptly pointed out, the city is unable to provide adequate services when the staffing needs aren't met. And not only staffing needs, but HR staff also provide support in areas that are not quite as obvious but are just as critical. We have the charge of not only making sure that the city has enough workers in its workforce to do all the work that needs to be done, but also that those employees are engaged, that they want to stay here, that we can retain them, and all of that work is just equally as important. And I say all the time, we can recruit all we want, but if people don't, aren't inclined to stay, the recruiting problem will never go away. So what we're asking for is a measure to address several kind of structural issues that we have in our HR staffing. As I alluded to before, we have, we're working in a very competitive job market right now. It's kind of the, it's, the ball is in the applicant's park, is in the applicant's court, if you will. And there are private sector jobs offering things that we, as a municipality, are unable to offer. We can't give sign-on bonuses to everyone. We have to have, you know, salary caps. We can't do yearly, annual bonuses, things that applicants can go and find other places. And so we do have some challenges. Right now, we have one staff member who's able to devote the majority of their time to talent acquisition, and that is inadequate. We've got upwards of about 40 vacancies right now, and even if that person were to do nothing all day except to recruit, we would have a very, very hard time catching up just with the staffing challenges. Because of the competitiveness of the job market, we also have to look at some enhanced recruitment strategies for, to increase our dwindling applicant pools, and not just in public safety, but we have some other hard-to-fill positions that require things like active recruiting. The days of posting a job in the news gazette and just hoping that applicants will show up are kind of over. And so time has to be spent going after folks, even folks who don't know that they're looking for a job right now, and that, all those things take time. And so we have to be creative and aggressive in our recruitment strategies, and there just unfortunately is not the bandwidth for that right now. And there just unfortunately is not the bandwidth for that right now. We also have a backlog of work in HR, including some policy updates. As you can imagine, outdated policies make the day-to-day administration of those policies difficult and they take more time, which takes time away from other critical areas. We also, as I alluded, have a a lack of employee engagement and retention strategies that are critical, like I said, to keeping staff wanting to stay here so we don't continually have this recruiting problem. And we also need to be able to provide training and professional development to our employees, which is not an area that we're able to focus on with our current staffing level. So, in recent history, just to give you a little bit of context, HR has typically been staffed with three full-time FTEs. This was the case through 2019 where there were three full-time, three three FTEs supported by the Assistant City Attorney, kind of on a part-time basis. The HR and Finance Departments merged in 2020. This allowed for the reallocation of some duties. So, the Labor and Employee Relations Manager, formerly Assistant City Attorney, came under the HR umbrella full-time. Some management duties were transferred to the department head and then the pandemic hit and everything kind of changed pretty pretty quickly. All of a sudden, there were pandemic policies to be created and implemented and enforced. The backlog of work became larger and we also experienced some turnover in HR staff during the pandemic, which made it even more difficult to keep up with just kind of the day-to-day essential HR functions. This has been exacerbated, of course, by the recruitment and retention crisis that we've that we've recently seen because in addition to retention issues in HR, we've also experienced retention and recruitment issues across the city, meaning that recruitment took a took it 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 just rose to the top of the priority list. And amid all of these other things that we needed to be addressing on a daily basis, it became clear that recruiting was going to be very important to work on pretty diligently. So, even historically, I want to point out that even before the merger of HR and Finance and even back in 2019, when there were just the three FTEs, HR staffing has never quite been adequate to address all of the essential HR functions. Staff previously, and I'll pull up a the org chart there for you guys to see. HR staffing was was pretty much predominantly ruled by benefits administration, at least one full-time recruiter who had some other duties. Even when HR and Finance merged, as you can see in this org chart, there was there was the is the HR manager, which is filled on an interim basis right now, the Labor and Employee Relations Manager, a Human Resources Assistant who provided admin support, and a generalist, which was has been charged primarily with recruiting but along with some other duties, kind of a jack-of-all-trades and a master of just enough to stay afloat. And then a benefits coordinator, which has been staffed on a part-time basis, which is also not adequate. Benefits Administration, I assure you, is a full-time job and we, I'm happy to say, are competitive in our benefits package. And so, that takes a lot of administration and a lot of time to explain to our employees what their benefits are, how they work, answer questions, things like that. So, what we are proposing is an increase and a re-alignment of staff and responsibilities. We are proposing two HR coordinators who will focus primarily on talent acquisition, one HR coordinator who will focus primarily on benefits administration, one HR assistant who will focus on things like records, records management, payroll changes, administrative support, help with some compliance reporting, things like that, as well as an HR manager to address some of that backlog of issues, get policies updated, maintain compliance, provide resources and support for organizational development and professional development, all, like I said, which are critical to an engaged and happy workforce. This would result in an increase of two full-time employees in the current HR staffing structure. This also would result in an HR staff to total workforce ratio of about two to 100 or one to 50. There are a lot of numbers out there as far as optimal HR to workforce staffing ratios, but this is actually pretty, this would actually put us pretty on par with other organizations our size. Interestingly enough, the smaller the organization gets, the more HR staff you need because fewer things are outsourced, services are centralized and we just don't have the bandwidth or the, quite honestly, the resources most times to be able to outsource some of those functions like payroll and compliance and and risk management and things like that. I do also want to point out that the temporary benefits coordinator position is going to be eliminated at the end, would be eliminated at the end of this year as we move into the new proposed staffing structure. But even so, that position is is termed to end in June of 2025. So, filling that position is going to be pretty critical.
Okay, so, so one of one of the big issues that we have with increasing staffing and one of the reasons I haven't asked for more staff before now is that we have a lack of space. We physically have no place to put more HR staff. So, we are looking at renting a second-floor office space in downtown Urbana. That lease still has to be finalized once we have a budget approved and the lease would require approval of the city council. There are other costs involved with that, furniture, carpet, you know, internet service, all the things that that go with setting up an office. Also, because we because we have the mobile meter application for parking, we would be able to set up a validation system to validate parking for our visitors. I don't want that to be a barrier to anybody, whether it's our employee or a prospective employee to coming to see HR. So, we would move seven to eight employees to it to the new location once once that's all finalized, which would actually free up a little bit of space here on the second floor in the city building, which is desperately needed by the executive department. So, we'll solve two problems by doing that. So, the cost of doing this is about 352,500 in FY23. So, that includes half a year of staffing the new positions, half a year of lease payments. But there are, you know, significant one-time costs included there as well. So, on an annual basis, we would expect the cost of all these changes to be about 349,000. That's that's not not an insignificant number, but in my opinion, money well-spent to support the effective functioning of the city organization. So, then going back to the budget amendment as a whole, because that's what you're seeing when you look at the numbers, for all of the items included in the budget amendment, the general fund balance projection would be reduced to 11.8 million, which is 30.24% of recurring expenditure, so still above our 25% policy goal. As we had previously discussed, I think when we talked about the forecast last year and when we presented the budget this year, we we know that revenue increases are in in our future. They're going to be needed to maintain city services. So, by spending down fund balance, both for incentives and for some of these HR changes, we're moving the time when that would need to happen closer. So, we're probably looking at within one to two years. We had we would reassess that as we look at the financial forecast and you'll probably see that in January. And then we would follow up with planning for that, which we would be doing regardless. It's just a question of what the number is. So, I think that was a lot, but we're happy to answer questions.
James.
Yeah, I have a question about the incentive program for both the new the hire of experienced police officers and the hire of new police officers. It talks about an agreement with those hirers about paying back all or part of the incentive if they leave in less than three years. Is that, is there a proration formula that you're intending to use for that? And what is it?
Yeah, and so, so the agreement would apply to people that are new hires, not to our current employees. But that would be prorated monthly over 36 months, three years.
So, whatever fraction of that time.
Right, if you were here for 12 months, you'd pay back two-thirds.
And that would be a hedge against someone going around picking up these incentives by moving to various departments.
Correct, because there are incentives everywhere that would be easy to do.
Thank you.
Grace.
Thanks, I've got a few here. With HR staffing, I think you touched on this a little, but could you tell us a little more about why doing this now, as in why not sooner if this has been an issue for years with 44 unfilled positions?
So, I I can't speak to why this was never requested prior to 2020 because I really didn't have the direct involvement with HR. But I I think, as Famy explained, then, once we kind of restructured HR, the pandemic hit, we were just kind of dealing with a with a flood of things. So, and it it kind of took us a while to kind of assess how much of what we're experiencing is related to pandemic stuff that we're dealing with versus how much is just like the fact that we don't have inadequate staffing to begin with. So, I think we finally kind of sifted through that and determined that, you know, this is this is where we need to be to adequately support the organization.
Thank you. And I had a few on your second item about modifications to criminal investigations work. I'm wondering if you could tell us a little more about what modifications and would there be any impact with the lobby reconfiguration that doesn't affect that department? Is that right?
Yeah, I'm going to I'm going to ask Rich to come up here. He can help us with this. But basically, it's, I think, the biggest part of this is reconfiguring a large, open area to accommodate more workspaces.
Good evening. So, some of this, some of this starts with the lobby reconfiguration. When the Services Division is going to be reconfigured because of the lobby reconfiguration, I'm going to lose workspace there. And so, with these two positions, I had to figure out where am I going to put them? Well, I don't have room in the Patrol Division. That only leaves me the Investigations Division. I know I'm not going to grow square footage there, so I sat down and I talked with a lady from stocks to see if is it even possible to reconfigure the Investigations Division to put in more workstations? The short answer is yes. The workstations are not quite as big, but I can get in the extra workstations into the Investigations Division to absorb these new employees. So, it's kind of a domino effect.
Thank you. And then on the numbers with that, I thought this was on the second item, but actually this is maybe about HR. On the actual budget C sheet, there's a whole bunch of, you know, changes at the top for HR, including office furniture and salaries and appliances. Then there's also in the VERF 79,000 for HR new office space for furniture. It seems like there's a lot of extra charges and does this all included in that 300-some-thousand for the employees? I'm confused where these numbers fall into the presentation you gave.
Right, so, everything is covered in the numbers I gave you, which were, I think it's like 325,000 in FY23 and then 350,000 roughly on an annual basis. So, some of those numbers, when you look at the exhibit on the budget amendment, you see more than once. So, our practice is that if we're buying something that's considered a capital expenditure, that we run that through the VERF, right? But as you, as you know, you probably remember, the VERF is supported by annual transfers from, you know, other departments to pay for the replacement of their equipment. So, in this case, we're going to run all of the office furniture and some other expenses through the VERF, but we actually have to transfer the money from the General Fund into the VERF to make that happen. So, you kind of see it twice on here because we're moving the money from the General Fund into the VERF where it becomes a revenue and then you actually see the expense. Does that help?
I still struggle with it, but I think that might just be me. So, thank you for trying to explain more.
Sure.
And then my last question was about the police recruitment incentives and stuff about the repayment, as James asked about earlier. Could you explain the benefit of doing that versus just paying after three years the total amount?
I think it's a better incentive to attract people.
Because they have the money upfront and worth having to do whatever process to track people down and get that repayment if they leave before that?
Yeah, and I mean, if you if you think about it, these are people that are currently employed somewhere else, right? So, we're trying to attract them away from wherever they're currently working and incentivize them to come to Urbana to leave whatever job they're in and go someplace new.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I said that was my last question. One more. We talked about some ideas of including incentives on possibly performance, merit, residency, anything like that. I was wondering if any of those were considered and what kind of the conclusion was to not go with those.
So, so at this point, it's it's, I'm going to say, it's kind of the nature of the union that they don't get paid based on performance, right? They get paid based on longevity. So, there's that. We don't have very many current police department employees who are actually residents of the city of Urbana. We have a few, but not very many. I think many police department employees prefer to live elsewhere than where they work.
Right, which is the purpose of the residency incentives.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
Chandra.
So, you mentioned the benefits coordinator will disappear June 23, but you also said that it's, we have a very good benefits package and it takes a lot of work. So, who's going to pick that up or which position?
We don't have anyone to pick it up as it stands. And so, the expiration of this part, this limited-term benefits coordinator kind of makes being able to staff a full-time benefits coordinator pretty crucial at this point. It would probably fall to the to the manager, honestly.
So, so you won't be creating a full-time benefits coordinator?
So, in the org chart that in the org chart that we're proposing, one of those three HR coordinators would be focused on benefits, right?
And then another question, so in the criminal investigations work area, you said the modifications cost 25, 75, 25 is in the budget and an additional 50 is needed. Is that that 50 just coming from the General Fund?
Correct.
And then. Oh, the the revenue increases, you sort of talked about that. I I would suggest, like, we start looking at that sooner rather than later. I mean, I know you're talking about the forecast coming up in January, but I I don't think we should wait one or two years to start talking about revenue.
Oh, no, we're we're planning to use the next forecast as a jumping off point for those conversations because it will it will take some time to work through the options and what makes sense and, you know, what feels best for the community.
Okay, thanks.
James.
So, I want, I have two questions now. One, one is I'm going to describe what I think is going to happen, which might help with some of us understanding the repayment. So, if we hired someone, a lateral transfer, they would get $10,000 on their first paycheck. If they worked 18 months and then left, we'd be copacetic because that's half of the 20,000. And then if they, right, because there's 10,000 we would give them at the end of the three years. Is that?
No, so if they're.
Am I misunderstanding that?
For lateral transfers, the second part of the incentive would come when they successfully complete probation.
How long is that?
Probably a year or so.
Laterals would be a field training program plus six months, so call it 10.
Okay, so if they got halfway through that, they've earned the the first part that they got. We're looking at this as $20,000 of an incentive. And so, however far they make it through that, if they make it more than halfway through that, then it's just reducing how much we gave, give them, right?
Well, they've already got it by that point. So, they they're getting the first 10,000 essentially when they start.
Right.
And the second 10,000 when they complete probation.
But if they only, if they leave halfway through probation.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying is it's $20,000 that we're talking about. And that's the timeline of payback proration if they don't complete it.
Correct.
Am I understanding that correctly?
That's.
As opposed to like the 10,000 at the other end, it's the whole value that's.
Yes.
Being prorated. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other question I had was the furniture for changing things up so that we can add two additional people in the investigation space, that is. that is furniture. So is that going to be moved through the VERF too? And is that in the, I don't know if I saw that in the...
Yes, it's on the exhibit. So if you look, the third line from the bottom, if you're looking at the numbers, so that bottom chunk is VERF and the second line within the VERF is the...
So it's seventy-five thousand. I should have been looking for seventy-five instead of fifty. Okay, got it, thank you. My fault.
Mary Alice.
Since you brought up furniture for the criminal investigation staff, I thought I'd ask you, Elizabeth had kindly walked me through some of the things today and had mentioned that the estimate for the HR staffing was approximately five thousand dollars per person for the furniture. So my question to you, Rich, is how did we get to seventy-five thousand for two people?
I don't like buying furniture. Let me start with that. So I've had a couple of conversations with our provider from stocks. And some of what I've got going on is everything that I've got in the investigations division is older than my tenure here. It was here when I got here in nineteen ninety-seven. I can't move it anymore. I can't reuse it. So I can't just pull stuff around. We've done that in the past and it, drawers don't open and it just gets weird fast. So, you know, initially, when I specked out the investigations division, it was less. But then it dawned on me that since I have to take everything out, and I do have to take everything out, I'm going to replace the carpet. The carpet's being held together with duct tape currently. So I'm going to replace the carpet. I'm going to get it painted. I'm going to put in new office furniture. I also have three other work areas that I needed to add in, that I originally hadn't specked out to them. And so I get up to, it's about sixty thousand dollars in furniture for twelve workstations. So I'm at about that five thousand dollar mark. But I don't have staff in public works to do the installation. So I have to pay for the installation. I have to pay for the disposal. So unfortunately, I've got a couple of layers of things I got to pay for there. But I'm at about that five thousand dollar mark.
All right, so we're not talking about two people adding two desks space and reconfiguring. We're talking about redoing twelve workstations.
All new, twelve workstations for the entire investigations division. For me to squeeze two more people in, I simply have to buy new furniture. I don't have another option.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else with questions? Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I will move to city council with a recommendation for, sorry, with a most, recommendation for approval. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-eleven-zero-four-five and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number four omnibus.
I'll second.
Okay, James seconds. Discussion, anybody? James.
Yeah, I am in support of this change. I believe in order to have a fully-staffed police force and be competitive in the current labor market, those changes are required. We did add these two investigation staff members. And I understand it does seem like a large furniture bill to address adding two people. But if you have been involved with modular furniture and how that works, I understand why we can't just squeeze two people in there. Lastly, I'm going through this, in my own work experience, I'm going through the challenge of what it's like to make progress on staffing when your HR staff is understaffed. And it's hard. It's, you're in a hole and you're trying to climb out and the sand is coming down. It's like a, it's like an ant lion thing. It's just really hard to climb out of it without enough people. It's one of those things, if you know, if you've flown on a plane, they say put your mask on first and then help the person next to you. For our HR team to help the other departments around them, we need enough staff to make progress on the forty-some, forty-five, forty-eight empty positions that we have. And we need to hire those HR staff positions first so that they can be working on leveraging us getting out of that. The number of things that are on that plate with this current staffing model, I think it's appropriate. It's unfortunate that we do not have space in this building. But as we know from our firefighting discussion of fire stations, that this building is on the master plan too as far as lack of space and some time in the next, I don't know if it's a decade. But we are filled to the gills here. If you took the tour like I did at the beginning of my term, you know that there's not a lot of unused space in this building at this time. And so the need for a little bit of elbow room makes sense. So I intend to support this and I appreciate all the work that's gone into making a cohesive, coherent proposal that is relevant to the current market trends and will help us make progress. Thanks.
Any more discussion? Mary Alice.
Well, I'll say for somebody who usually checks all the numbers, this is a big one. I'd have to agree with James. You know, if you work at the university, you know that a lot of people have left. It's very challenging to even get jobs posted these days. Ever since I've been on city council, one of the things that I've seen is I've seen department heads leave and have interims for two years and have positions go unfilled and having people do two jobs at the same time. So I think that we really need to be able to be fully staffed. The city council passes a budget so that we have a full staffing capacity and it's time for us to really focus our efforts on that. So even though this is a large chunk of money and I think that, I'm not concerned about the increase in staffing. It's really the space issue, but what are you going to do? We don't have space. So I definitely am happy to see that the city has got a plan moving forward so that we can decrease all of these needs for people to do more than one job. The second piece that I just kind of wanted to bring up, because I don't know if we talk about it a lot, is that in order to have a good police force, we have to have a fully-staffed police force. We have to have a long-term staffing so that people know our community, so that people don't get overtime all the time and then are exhausted. So I think it's really important for people to recognize the fact that we have a better police force when we have fully-staffed police who have been here for quite some time, to get to know what we want to stress in our community. And one of those things that we've talked a lot about is de-escalation. And so I really see that there is a relationship between the amount of time that police members can be with the community and de-escalation. And so I think it's good that we're trying to retain our staffing that we have. We have a good force and I'm happy to see this on the agenda.
Grace.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation and answering our questions here. I understand the stated needs for the increase in HR staffing and space and recruitment and retention for police, needing people to be able to respond to real emergencies in a timely manner. I have a lot to consider still this week before the final vote next week. I'm still struggling with how to justify the police incentives to people working in Urbana at the median income, which is much lower than starting police officers and other city staff who's also been struggling and overworked and short-staffed. And then also when compare on a big picture, city spending for social services and community support compared to these incentives. I also have some concerns with finances in the long term and putting us in an even more risky position for the future. So I have a lot to consider for the final vote next week.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no more discussion, will clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Harsey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marla?
Yes.
Okay, that definitely passes. Onto the next, oh, thank you. Famy, welcome to the show. Okay, so the next item is resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-eleven-dash-zero-eight-six-r. Resolution estimating the tax levy fiscal year twenty-two-two to twenty-three. And Elizabeth, it looks like you're going to do that again.
Just for educational purposes, I'm going to run through some basics on property taxes before we talk about our levy. This is something we only deal with once a year and it's confusing to me. And I've probably done twenty different tax levies by this point in my life. So first of all, properties in Illinois are assessed at one-third of their fair market value. That's the equalized assessed valuation. There are also exemptions applied which reduce the taxing value. The most common one is the six thousand dollar exemption for owner-occupied properties, but there are a number of them. So the taxing value, the number they could choose when our tax levy is extended by the county clerk, is the EAV less the exemption. So that's the basis for calculating a tax bill. So as an example, a one-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar home is assessed at one-third of fair market value or fifty thousand dollars. If that home is owner-occupied, that reduces the taxing value by six thousand to forty-four thousand. Forty-four thousand is the number used to calculate the tax bill. So also important to remember is each taxing districts of the city, the school district, the park district and a bunch of others levy their own taxes. So we're all kind of doing this process independently. The county calculates the total tax rate for a particular property by adding the tax rates for all of the individual taxing districts that are applicable to that property. So for most properties in Urbana, the city's property taxes, when you get your bill, are only about thirteen percent of the total. And also in terms of timing, taxes that are levied in twenty-two-two will be received in calendar year twenty-two-three, mostly in May and September, which are the due dates. So to complicate things further, when we levy taxes, when the city levies taxes, the assessments aren't finalized. The properties have been assessed by the township assessor, but there are still appeals going on with the board of review. So when we approve the final levy, we'll have a separate ordinance that basically limits our tax rate. We're not subject to tax caps, but we kind of voluntarily limit our tax rate to maintain a stable tax rate. So we won't even know the final levy amount until the spring, probably March-ish, because we'll be reducing it to maintain that tax rate. So the number's going to be lower than what we're talking about today. So also pension funding is a big issue with property taxes. Police and fire pensions are defined benefit pension plans and those benefits are set by state statute. Our current policy is that we will be a hundred percent funded in twenty years and that started with the twenty-eighteen property tax levy. This year is year five of that transitional phase in of that funding. So I just have to add this each time, but failing to address pension liabilities is kind of a slippery slope which will lead to larger liabilities in the future. And I know I attached to your report the memo from twenty-eighteen where we went through the whole thing with the city council at that time. So looking at that twenty-twenty-one property taxes, which we're receiving in twenty-two-two, just so you can get an idea of how this splits out, you can see that we're over there in the green slice at thirteen percent. The schools are the biggest piece at fifty-six percent. And then everybody else is, you know, considerably smaller. Parks is right behind us at twelve percent. Of our thirteen percent, if we parcel that out, currently the library's getting close to half of that. Pensions are getting almost a third of that and the general fund just gets what's left. So to put that kind of in context of revenues in the general fund, if you look at the property taxes that actually go to pay for city services like public safety, that'd be this little purple slice down here, which is about two-point-three percent of our revenues. The pension revenue passes through the general fund, but it immediately goes right back out again. So that's about actually ten percent of our general fund revenue. So that distribution, that'll be a little bit different with the next budget and the next levy, but probably not hugely different. So looking at our assessed value over time, this is kind of interesting. This goes back to two thousand nine, which was right around the time of the Great Recession. And often in a recession, you'll see property values fall later. So we kind of got hit with a double whammy because property values started to drop and then the hospital properties came off the tax rolls. So you can see just with the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one levy, we kind of got back to the assessed value that we had back in two thousand, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So city taxes that a homeowner pays, just our little part of the tax bill, and I'm going to use that one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home again, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's what the owner of a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home pays in property taxes for city services. You know, I go up to two hundred and fifty thousand here, but even at two hundred and fifty thousand, it's about a thousand dollars a year. So to get specific about this property tax levy, the mayor again recommends maintaining our tax rate, which is a dollar thirty-four-point-nine-nine. We levy taxes for four purposes. So we levy for police pension, we levy for fire pension, we levy for library operations, and then corporate purposes, which is that general fund piece that I talked about that's kind of whatever's left over within that tax rate. So the library is very dependent on property tax revenue. That's the vast majority of what they have to pay for services. The proposed levy for the library is about three-point-nine million and that's based on the current budget, which you all reviewed back in the spring. This gives them the revenue that's necessary to support that budget and it's an increase of about five-point-four percent from their twenty-twenty-one tax levy. Police and fire pensions are the next largest share of the levy and I'm just going to kind of lump these together. That's about almost three-point-nine million. And again, that's based on the funding policy that the council approved in twenty-eighteen. We're in the last year of that transition, but our goal is that we would be a hundred percent funded in twenty years. So corporate levy again is the portion that we can contribute to public safety and other general city services. And that's the part that we adjust to maintain that stable tax rate. So based on maintaining the same tax rate, this portion's going to increase by maybe around half a million dollars. But that could be much lower just depending on what happens with the board of review and what the final assessments are for the city. So this is looking at the city's tax levy by those different purposes that we talked about over time. So you can see at the bottom, we have the library. That's the kind of purplish color. And that's just going up kind of modestly over time, which you'd expect. Everybody's budget gets bigger over time as wages go up and costs increase. The green part is the pensions. And that's kind of interesting as well because from twenty-thirteen to twenty-fifteen, the pension levies decreased and the corporate levy increased. That was where the city actually reduced pension funding to the minimum required by state law. But starting in twenty-sixteen, they started increasing even at the minimum amount. And again, that's because you start to build this unfunded liability that eventually has to be paid back. So twenty-eighteen, it goes up and that was the first year of the transition plan. So what's really interesting about that is you can see the blue part at the top is the corporate levy, the part that goes to the general fund. And you can see that ever since... And you can see that ever since twenty sixteen, that's been steadily going down, right? Up until the twenty twenty-two levy, which is an estimate. We don't really know what that's gonna be, that could also go down. But we've definitely, for, in terms of property tax that's allocated to general city services, that has been decreasing over time. So in order to complete the tax levy process, we're gonna ask you to adopt the estimated levy next week, which is the resolution that you have in your packet. Then we would hold a public hearing on Monday, December fifth. That'll be advertised consistent with the requirements in state law. And then on December twelfth, we would ask you to approve the final tax levy ordinance. Also the abatement for bonds, so bonds are automatically levied when you pass a bond ordinance. So we have to pass a resolution to say, no, don't, don't levy that money. We have money to pay for that. And then also an abatement to bring that corporate levy down to the, to the rate that, that we want it to be at, which is a dollar thirty-four point nine-nine. So I feel like that was a lot in a little time. But I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions? Grace.
Thanks again for all the information. If I could just reiterate to clarify, so we're keeping the, the same rate as last year, so we're not increasing the rate for the city, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then there is an increase, but that's because overall the property value from the equalized assessed valuation has increased.
Right, and, and again, we don't know what that final number will be, but there, there will be an increase. It may not be as big as, as we would like, but.
Okay, and then between the library, the pensions and the corporate purposes, it's just over nine million or so that would go to the city for those different purposes, but only the corporate purpose goes to the general fund.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah. Okay, uh, go ahead, Mary Alice.
Alright, I will move ordinance number twenty twenty-two eleven, sorry. Resolution number twenty twenty-two eleven oh eight six R, resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three to city council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Second advised, Sharice, any discussion?
Just to clarify, are we putting this on file similar to the township model?
No, I don't think so. No, so I, I can't speak to the township, but the way this work, the way this works for municipalities in Illinois is that you pass an estimated levy, which is what this resolution is and that says, okay, this is our intent to levy X. And then we use that to determine whether we're, we're, whether we're required to advertise and hold a public hearing under the truth and taxation law, which we will be because of the increase in assessed value. And then you actually adopt the levy in December and then it gets filed with the county clerk. So I, I don't know about the putting the thing on file thing, never had any experience with that, but I'm confident and I think our attorney will agree that this is the proper way to do it.
I assume that whatever criteria that requires the truth and taxation public hearing is what drives us to put it on file for people to look at it before we ask them to come tell us what they think about it.
Correct, I think the whole reason for having, passing an estimated levy is so that you can make that determination of whether it triggers the, the notice and the hearing requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mayor, did you wanna make a comment about the levy? Okay, just, just offering. Okay, so this will be a voice. And so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. The ayes have it. That resolution passes. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your hard work. Okay, next up is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh four six and ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, chapter three, section three dash forty-three, maintaining the number of class R and T dash two liquor licenses for Colebrook Enterprises LLC, whatever DBA means. The Courier Ca, thank you. The Courier Cafe, eleven, one eleven North Race Street, Urbana, Illinois. And Carol, is this? Oh, the mayor, okay, go ahead.
I will make a comment about alcohol tonight, so. I'm delighted to bring this ordinance forward. This would be basically transferring or creating a new liquor license for the new owners of the Courier Cafe, Bill and Kim Colebrook. So we're delighted that the ownership has transitioned to folks who, who've been longtime customers of the cafe, longtime residents of Urbana and who are passionate about continuing many of the traditions that people love about the Courier. So this is an R and T liquor license, same thing that's there now. It's for the sale of beer and wine. It does not increase the overall number of R and T licenses in the city of Urbana. So I would recommend that you send this to council for approval.
Any questions, Grace?
Just a quick one, do you say there's not any change in the total number? So they had one before and this is just?
Yeah, liquor licenses are attached to the individual owners. So the ownership has changed, so we have to create the new license. Thank you.
Sharice.
I'd like to move for ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one one dash zero four six and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, chapter three, section three dash four three, maintaining the number of class RT two liquor licenses for Colebrook Enterprises LLC, DBA, the Courier Cafe, one eleven North Race Street, Urbana. Be moved for city council, to city council for approval.
Second.
Seconded by James.
I did, I did forget to mention the Colebrooks are in the audience tonight.
They are, yeah. Okay, so any discussion? Oh, sorry, Mary.
I, I just want to say how pleased I am that the Colebrooks took over this great establishment. I actually happened to be there on Thursday and I, I ran into the Colebrooks and I was gonna come in and have a beer with my dinner, but there was no beer menu. And then, you know, I opened up the packet and realized why there's no beer menu. So I'm happy to support this.
Okay, any other comments? All right, well, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion definitely passes and congratulations to the Colebrooks and thank you for taking over the great Courier, that's great. Okay, last over business here is council input or communications. Would anybody like to make comments? You have three minutes. Grace.
Thank you, just a quick one for a last minute reminder that our output applications close in two days. I thought they were already closed, so thanks for the reminder. I've lost track of dates. And then also just wanted to reiterate that I'm still interested in a discussion on hybrid or remote meetings, especially when we're coming into this winter weather. Not sure what our snow options are, but it seems like we've had a lot of, you know, technological advances in being able to meet remotely. So I'm interested in revisiting that still. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Oh my goodness, okay, well, that wraps it up with no other further business. We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.